I'd like to call the October 28th, 2014 Longmont City Council Meeting Order. This is our regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes. Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos. Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
All right. Let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items tonight or at final call, public invited to be heard. So now we have the October 14th minutes. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move we approve the minutes.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. That's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions?
Mayor Coombs, there were no agenda revisions this week.
Is there a report from the city manager?
No report, Mayor, council.
All right, I guess we got special reports and presentations, so.
Do you want me to read that first item?
Sure.
It's, the first report is Dia de los Muertos, honoring Day of the Dead at the Longmont Museum and throughout the Longmont community. And Carmen Ramirez will start this presentation off.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks. Technical difficulties here. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Buenas noches. Gracias por verme el placer de venir aquí a presentarles a ustedes acerca del Dia de los Muertos. So thank you for giving me the honor to come here and present to you about Day of the Dead. It's a story about a signature event, and so we wanted to share that with you because it has brought value to our community in many ways. And you'll see over this presentation the value that it's brought. So started back in 2001, and as you can see, we've been going strong and growing over 13 years now. Wanted to, there's a photo when we started, that was in the old museum where we started. El Dia de los Muertos is an event that really honors our ancestors. It's very popular in Mexico, South America, the Southwest. It's the day that we have to honor and celebrate our deceased loved ones. We come together to participate in community and share in food and reflect on all the contributions our family has given us. So it is not only individually, but community. And as we shared this gift, we were able to really bring others from the community to look at their own cultural backgrounds and become a very inclusive event that is inclusive of a lot of different cultures and backgrounds and focused on honoring our As you can see, we celebrate Day of the Dead at the museum. There's culturally driven exhibits, there's education programs, and a huge family celebration that happens on the Saturday. And there's a lot of events that happen. But I want to tell you a little bit about how we started this event. So this event got started with the courage of some of our city staff. City staff said back in 2001, how do we make a museum that is open, that is welcoming, and inclusive of all of our community? And so Martha Clevenger was one of the people that organized bringing in Latinos to the museum and asking that question. What would bring you to the museum? What would draw you to the museum? And out of those conversations, what happened was a true collaboration of building capacity and relationships with the Latino community, of engaging them, and then also seeing what we have in common with other different cultures and how they have come to be part of that. It really strengthened the sense of belonging for the Latino community and for others too, that we are part of this, that we are an asset, that we are a gift to the community. So you'll see as you go through the presentation how it has had not only drawn visitors to our community, but it's now having a big economic impact. You'll see a little presentation on downtown. But it did start with that courage to really say, let's be inclusive, and how do we do that? And how do we embrace the gifts of diversity in our community? So that's really how it got started. Along the years, I have to mention that we have lost a couple of staff members, and it also gave us the opportunity to honor those staff members. Throughout the years, many of you have seen alters of some of those staff members and other community members that have been lost, but it's a way to continue to honor and bring them to life and the contributions that they continue to give in our community. So before we move on to Ann, who's going to give her presentation, we have a small gift. It really has been inclusive in how it's attracted people. Channel 8, there was a group of folks that did a video called El Dia de los Muertos, A Latino Gift to Longmont. And so we have some videos, yes, thank you. We have some videos for you as a gift, and then we also have some information on how you can check it out at the library, but also how you can view it on Channel 8. So we'll also give you this. And then Ann's going to give you a little bit more information. Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you.
Okay. So my name's Ann Holly Maccas. I'm the curator of education at the Longmont Museum. And thank you, Mayor Coombs and council members, for allowing us to talk to you tonight. I'm going to share with you some of the numbers to help illuminate why we think this is such a special event and such a special exhibit, and why we think you should think so too. So over the years, the Day of the Dead exhibit at the museum has really grown a lot. In the beginning, it was a museum exhibit that was mostly alters, and now that exhibit has grown to be so much more. This list shows 30 artists and different groups of dancers, singers, that sort of group, that have participated in our exhibit and event in the past 14 years. This list is not exhaustive, but I think that it will give you a good idea of the number of people who are professional recognized artists, who are both from Longmont, also from the greater region around Colorado, Denver metro area, other states as far away as New York, and other countries who have participated in our exhibits. So this is just to give you an idea that this cultural experience is not insular to Longmont. It's bigger, it's broader, and it brings in that artistic inspiration and artistic merit from other places. Over the years, this exhibit has grown from the first attendance in 2001 was 179 people. Last year, we had 6,484 visitors, and that bumped us up over 40,000 visitors in the past 14 years, just to this exhibit and the programs and events that go with it. So we think that that really shows that a lot of people care and are interested. Where these people come from is also illuminating. This map shows that last year, from 2013, a sampling of just 1,000 paid visitors was collected at the front desk of the museum. Their zip codes were collected, and this map shows the different areas in Colorado those 1,000 people came from. Now remember, there were 6,484 other people, well, total people. So this gives you just a picture. And so of course, Longmont's that red dot in the middle, that's about 60% of the visitation. And then the rest, the other 40% of that thousand sampling, came from really all over the state. So it's, it draws visitors from far and wide. This has become a resource, not just to individual community members, but also to educators. Those educators have come from CU, from Front Range Community College, St. Brain Valley School District, of course, Boulder Valley Schools send their kids up here. We get high school students, middle school students, adults, English language learners, as well as adults who are studying Spanish and other cultural experiences, and not to mention homeschool groups and private schools. So this is really a resource for educators of all kinds, of all ages, throughout our community and beyond. The media has taken note of what we do. I think it's important to know that, of course, The Times Call has given us generous coverage, probably from the very beginning, but regionally as well, we've had coverage from Boulder Magazine, from KGNU in Boulder, from Colorado Public Radio on Colorado Matters, from Nine News, so statewide coverage, as well as national coverage from websites like MSN.com. So of course, the museum can't do it alone. This has been a partnership exhibit and program from the very beginning, and we would, of course, especially like to acknowledge the other community services divisions and departments that have helped us. So Children and Youth and Family Resources, that's actually Patty Moreno right there from Children and Youth, who is doing face painting. She's a great partner. The Neighbor, or the Rec Center works with us, Senior Center, Library, we've just had a number of really wonderful partners through the city. Then, of course, outside of the city, we have a number of partners who help us in various ways, and this is a short list of some of those partners who've given us their time. And our big celebration in the exhibit could not exist without the in-kind support we get from businesses like Best Western, Comida, El Rey, some of the bakeries and tortilleras around town, many of the bigger companies like Western Sugar has in fact supported us with donations in the past. So it's not just individuals and community members, it's also businesses who help us make this happen and see value in what we're doing. Financial support, we couldn't survive without that, and of course, part of it is paid for through our general funds through the city of Longmont, but a significant amount of our funding comes from different grant sources, including private companies like Walmart, Safeway, and then SCFD funding, all kinds of different funding sources to make this happen. So it's really supported not just by the city, but by a diverse funding source. And of course, we couldn't do it without our volunteers. This year, we've had about 175 volunteers help us make this happen, and that is individuals. Those are individual people who have participated by building alters, by cutting papel picado. These women in this photo here are residents from Casa Esperanza. They cut our papel picado for us every year. Volunteers who make the event happen on Saturday, November 1st. We've got volunteers for everything, and some of our volunteers are here this evening. And so I was hoping if you were a volunteer, you might stand. Thank you for coming, and thank you for your support. And of course, I would like to invite you all to join us this Saturday, November 1st, between 11:00 and 4:00 p.m. It's our big celebration day. It's a day full of fun, food festivities, performers, crafts for kids, face painting. It's a really great day to visit the museum, and it's also a free day to visit the museum. So please, 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 join us. And what's, what does the future look like for Day of the Dead? So with our new expansion, much of our exhibit and events will move into the 250-seat auditorium. But also in recent years, we've had some really wonderful partners downtown. These are the businesses who have participated in 2013 and 14, and I'm going to hand it over to Kimberly McKee from LDDA, who's going to tell you a little bit about Day of the Dead spreading downtown and what that means and why it matters.
Thank you, everyone. I will say, the city staff has done such a great job and the museum staff, that it really has made this celebration contagious, and it certainly came downtown. Whoops. And as part of our creative district, the museum is part of the creative district, but they're not right close into our boundaries, and so we are always looking ways to partner with them. This year, we had 22 businesses that did Day of the Dead alters. We put them up in our second Friday in October, and they stay up through November 2nd. Organizations downtown are also holding Day of the Dead events. So the Katrina Ball was just held at the Firehouse Art Center. It's one of their fundraisers, and it's amazing evening. Earlier than that, they have a time where artists come and paint Catrinas that are up, and then they auction them off. It's really amazing. Longmont Council for the Arts did Viva la Vida, which was a dance celebration, dancing across cultures, and it was a dance all explaining Day of the Dead. So we have all kinds of great things that are happening in the district. Of those business alters, you can see some of the great work that we've done. Firehouse had one dedicated to Robin Williams, so everything was for Robin Williams. Barbwire in the past has done alters that celebrate all of the authors that had passed, famous authors in that year. So they're really taking their businesses and working Day of the Dead. So we see Happy Cakes up there, Sun Rose. You can see what Great Frame Up has done. At Crackpots, it was an ode to cats, so everyone had little cat alters. And one of the most interesting in our, in our forming committees, Carmen Morales said, it would be great if you had the funeral homes be involved. And so Carol Llewellyn did a wonderful altar that sits outside, and they said that they've seen lots of visitors that are coming. And so it's really, truly been a celebration that spreads all throughout the LDDA. So we decided, how can we get people all around and to the museum to see the great wonderful things? So we had a bus tour, a trolley tour on second Friday. Oscar Blues supplied us with a trolley, which was wonderful, and we filled two trolleyfuls of people. We had an early and a full, and both of those were sold out. And so you can see, we went to the museum, we went to the Firehouse, we went all the way up to the new art studios at the Mixed Use Development at Longspreek in Maine. So we asked people what they liked, and mostly they loved Ann. Ann was on the trolley, and she gave a wonderful tour. They said that they loved the museum tour, especially the information from the guide, and the trolley was fun. We loved the camaraderie and the decorations. Those skulls bouncing with every bump in the road was hilarious. So we decorated the trolley, and there were little skulls that moved around. And being amongst so many ages, all full of enthusiasm and festive colors. And so we didn't know who would come to this, and it was such an interesting mix. And we asked people, why are you here and how did you come? We had people from Loveland who had never been to our downtown, who read about it in the paper. We had people with their middle school or high school age children, young children, so it truly was a mix of all type of people who came. Another thing that we did when we were talking, Lupita, from Spanish with Lupita Downtown, said we should have a Storytime. So we turned St. Stevens Plaza into Storytime Under the Stars. We had stories in English and Spanish. We had a craft table. We partnered with the library and their storyteller, and that brought about almost 50 people to hear Storytime during that second Friday. And so we did ask a sampling of who came on the bus. What they said is do more tours like this, it was great. They heard about it through Facebook, emails, and print flyers that we had at the museum. We asked them how often they come down. Few people, it was their first time. Some people said often, other people said sometimes. And then we asked them if they were spending that night. And most people spent, one person spent over $100, and most people spent anywhere between 10 and 50. And so they were spending that night as well when they came down. And then we're asking the businesses, what are they seeing? So some businesses are seeing new customers. People are coming in to kind of see their alters and being introduced to their business. Many are getting very positive feedback about the alters that they're seeing. We will continue to track it, to see if it equates to new sales, but everyone is saying they're seeing a really good community spirit, and that this is something great that they, that they love doing. So I would really like to thank the city of Longmont and the Longmont Museum for a wonderful collaboration that we hope to build on in the future.
Thank you, Kimber. That's the last presenter? Well, thank you. Thank you all.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is a special flood recovery presentation by Molly Wittenberg, Program Manager for Colorado Spirit.
Hi, I'm Molly Wittenberg, and I am the Program Manager for Colorado Spirit, which is a crisis counseling program that's put in effect after every disaster. So Colorado Spirit was in effect for the fires, et cetera. In any FEMA declared disaster, they put this kind of crisis counseling program in effect. And Boulder County, as you know, had their first real FEMA declared disaster. So the program we have, it's run by the state, and it's funded by FEMA, and it's a program of mental health partners. And so we're really there for the emotional behavioral health of the community recovering disaster, which can be difficult. So Mental Health Partners, which is where we are, they're, as you may well know, they're a nonprofit, community mental health center, and they have offices here in Longmont as well as in Boulder. And I would tell you that whether you're in a disaster or not, they're a really valuable community resource. They do a lot and are valuable. We are in the blue, always in our blue, so if you see us around your neighborhood, which you probably have, you'll know who we are now. The mission of our program is to assist individuals and communities in recovering from the effects of natural and human caused disasters through the provision of community-based outreach and psychoeducation services. So we're here for those, for that's our primary purpose. The tenets of the program is that it's strength-based. We assume strength and resiliency in individuals and communities, and we try to draw that out. We also, it's anonymous. We don't keep tabs of individuals or their addresses and things where, all the work we do, nothing like that is recorded or passed on. It is outreach-oriented. We go into communities, we don't expect people to come for services or for care. We go to where they are, because that's often where they need it. Often, when you're in that kind of position, you're not really reaching out, you tend to isolate when things aren't going well. It's non-traditional settings, it's not in offices, it's in homes, it's at fairs, it's different places that we find people. And it's also designed to strengthen existing community support systems. We're not there to create new ones because we're a temporary program. We're there to help with existing programs, which frankly, Longmont has done an excellent job. We've been just able to help a bit here and there. So the services we do, we have primary services, this is based on what we, individual crisis counseling, which I've mentioned, where we talk to individuals. Then, just brief, how are you doing, educational support. And then we do group crisis counseling. We put together support groups where they're called for. We do educational groups, et cetera. Community and networking support. We try to bring homeowners associations, cities, different groups together to try to help create those bonds more than they were there before. And public education. We do some work with schools, with other groups, to try to create, help people understand recovery, both psychological and in other ways, as well as resiliency and being prepared for the next, so the next time you know what's going to come, you know that you can handle it better. We also, we also do a lot of referrals. We try to know a lot about everything that is available to flood survivors, so that if we're at their door, we can tell them where they can get sandbags, or the different things that will help them where they are. So we tend to refer them to other kinds of linkages. Then secondary, secondarily, we develop and give out a lot of material, brochures, education, psychoeducation literature, et cetera, and just media and public things to try to get the word out. This is a graph of the phases of disillusionment and such after disaster, and it's, it's really interesting, because as we've looked at our work, it follows it pretty closely. Right after a disaster, you tend to, the impact, you're, everything is, goes down in terms of, you know, you're feeling negative. Then there's a honeymoon period where everyone comes in to help, and everyone feels better. Then they all go away, and the disillusionment period comes where you realize, we're not where we thought we would be, or we wish we would be. And you can see about where the anniversary was. You tend, often that tends to be a difficult time again, where people realize it's been a whole year, and this is coming. And then there's, tends to be recovery up to pretty much pre-disaster points as you move past that point. Now you'll see before the anniversary, there are dips, and that's when people were concerned about spring and summer flooding. Again, those fears of trigger events create that. So there, as you know, this is Boulder County. We have four teams in Boulder County, and I'm going to focus obviously on the Longmont team. And this is our Longmont team. All the people you see there in blue, the others are the rest of our Boulder County team. Andrea Viner, who is the team leader, our team is here with me. So our primary role is outreach, and outreach is, we've done it to all the businesses in the area. We have gone to all the, a lot of the agriculture, most of the farms, and what we found with them is, they had a lot of impact, as you can imagine. They lost fences, they lost ditches, they, and they lost soil, and they lost customers right when they needed them, because crops don't last, and people weren't really buying at the time they needed them. But what we've really found in that community is resilience. They've been, they are used to droughts and different things, and they were, they really are a model of resilience in terms of large and small disasters. This is, shows some of the work we do after we visit people or places. We mark what we found, either they, they were doing fine, or they needed a little support, or we should go back, or we left literature, et cetera, and we keep track of, you know, basically what kind of things we found. And the anniversary, that was a very important piece for us to help with. What we wanted to do was, in every community across Boulder County, people needed different things, as you know. Some people wanted it to go away and not even know it happened, and other people felt the need to commemorate it and to come together. And for, for a great number of people, we find that's very helpful, that if they can commemorate it and face it together, it tends to strengthen the survivor and weaken the trigger in the future. So when it came to that, we, we, as we said, we came, we talked to people, figured out what they needed, what each community wanted. We helped coordinate that with the city and with other groups, and then we commemorated with them. And those, I think, were very successful all the way around. We did this, this postcard project, where people could write down their experience or draw a picture, and those are going to be on the city's website. Here are just some examples of what people wrote about the flood, and some pictures. Kids really enjoyed it. They got to, to put their thoughts about, you can see the water up above the houses, and just helped for them to show what their experience was or their memory. We also did a, are doing kids photo project, which will also be on the city's website. We asked kids, what's your happy? What makes you happy about your neighborhood, about your house? And they would draw pictures, and we took pictures of them with this. We've been involved with a lot of events, which is how we reach out to people. We've been, we were part of the Cinco de Mayo event, and talked to a lot of people about their past. We were at the Boulder Creek Festival, which wasn't in Longmont, but had a lot of Longmont people there, and because the picture was so cute, I had to put it up. The farmer's markets, we found a lot of people came to talk to us there about their flood experiences. And the Longmont Summer Reading Series. We've done a few things at the library with kids, because we find that's a really important group to reach out to, because their, their experience, you know, they, they don't have as much context for it, context for it as we do often. We also took part of the Boulder County Flood Commemorative Kickoff, which was the result of resilience conversations, which were held. John Clark was very involved in putting those together. They were throughout Boulder County, but helping citizens and communities figure out how they could be more resilient, and having conversations around that. We were part of the Windows to Wellness and the Sweet Taste, which was a very sweet event. And we've been involved in the St. Brain Village. They, as you know, were heavily impacted. We've helped them with some events, with the playground restoration, helping them pull that together, as well as the workdays for, for trailer, the trailers that need to be restored and, or changed out. With the playground restoration, as you can see, everybody got involved, even the kids wanted to help. And what was great about that is getting everybody involved in helping their community recover. It gives each person a sense of moving on when they're able to assist, even if it's in a small way. There is another one of these days coming up, we're doing one workday a month, and that community are helping with that. So then I wanted to, I'll tell you the results. So then I wanted, I'll tell you the results of what we've found. So these are the, the people we've reached. We've had individual encounters and we've also had the, the group encounters. We've had, I can't even see that from here, 171 individual and 400 and, 727 group encounters. And those are vice versa. So the group encounters will be support group meetings, et cetera. And we're, we have support groups in a few areas where flood survivors just come and talk to each other. And we're, we're, as we, our program ends December 30th, we're trying to have them take ownership of that so they can run those and continue those even when we're gone. But those have been very, very useful to those people. In fact, I had someone call today and really needed to get plugged into one of those. And then just in terms of our total number of contacts, as you can see, we've talked to thousands of people and about their experiences and helped them to process those. Okay, there we are. Okay, now you can see these up close. So the 100 group and the 700 individual. And these are the actual contacts that weren't necessarily quite counseling, but were just touching base with people. We've tried to reach as many as we could who were impacted. Then in terms of individual counseling, these are, we keep track of what we talk to people about, what they need. And as you can see, about a third of the time, they just needed help problem solving, figuring out how to move forward. They were stuck. It was overwhelming. So a third of our contacts tended to be around that. Then we had, you know, doing positive things, getting out of the negative mindset and how do you, you move yourself into a more positive framework, you can actually move forward. Then some on managing your, your reactions, physical and emotional, and, and reducing negative thoughts, trying to get out of that negative mindset again. And then the breakdown in referrals by month. As you can see, that's pretty consistent. It didn't change that much, who we referred people to, that, who we returned to mental health, community services, et cetera. It's, it's pretty consistent over time. And then this slide, breakdown of where these encounters happen. As you can see, most of them happen in people's residence. They're permanent or temporary home, because that's what we try to do, is reach out to people where they are. That's where they're often most comfortable talking. So most of these are in people's permanent residence. And then these are our observations that I wanted to share with you. So these are breakdown of, of risk categories by month. And the, basically from the red down, has to do with financial issues. So over half of them, as you could imagine, they're, you know, damaged homes or destroyed homes, losing a job for flood-related, losing a vehicle or other major property loss. And probably half of the, the risk factors had to do with those things. And then this graph is interesting because the blue line is people who are coping well. And you can see it goes up and down. And what's very interesting is the red line, which is that they're experiencing event reactions, they're experiencing triggers from the flood or such. You can all see they're almost opposite of one another. So when you're experiencing those triggers or event reactions and not able to move on you, it's the opposite of coping well. So we found that interesting. And if you keep an eye on that red and then look at this, we go back to the original of the, the phases of disaster, they almost fall right on top of each other. The timing is very consistent with what they found in every previous disaster. And then we are nearing the end of our project. We only have a couple months left. So what we're continuing to do is outreach. We're, again, still going out to people and seeing what we can do at the end to help them out. We're involved in the Kids Who Care Library Project, which we're putting together, which is basically half the day is learning self-care, yoga, how to take care of yourself and be more resilient. And the other half is really volunteering, learning to help your community. And they're doing little projects. In fact, you might see some of them come to you and gifting to others. We're also, again, involved with the St. Green Volunteer Day, which is on the 15th of November. The more the merrier. You can always use extra hands at that. And we're, that is in combination with Lightbug, and lots of help in Longmont. We're also working with Life Bridge Church in terms of creating preparedness things for the community as they're ongoing. So as we leave, they'll still be here. And we're working on first responder training, helping them, some of the first responder community across the county to really understand and help with self-care and resiliency so that they can be more prepared with their own personal dealing with trauma. And the last slide I wanted us is, you know, how can we help you? If you find as a staff or people you have that we can reach out to you with individual crisis counseling, secondary trauma, that so many people have worked so hard to help the survivors in your community. Or groups, we can do secondary trauma or trauma-informed care, self-care kinds of little sessions. And we'd be happy to do that. We can also do outreach. We're trying to reach, reach the displaced people in your community that have fallen through the cracks because we're finding there are people that they don't have an address or they're, they're just harder to find and often they're the people who most need help. So that's what we're here for, and I wanted to give you a report on what we found. Thank you.
Thank you for what you did for all of the citizens of Longmont. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. It's been a privilege.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is presentation of Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association to the City of Longmont for the 2014 Operating Budget. And Jim Golden will make this presentation.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I'm Jim Golden, Director of Finance. So yes, tonight we are presenting the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for our 2014 budget. The city is attaining this award for the 23rd year in a row. It's from the Government Finance Officers Association. It's the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting, and it's a significant achievement for the, the city and its staff. The award reflects the commitment of the council and the staff to meet the highest principles of governmental budgeting. And in order to receive this award, we have to publish a budget that meets nationally-recognized criteria for effective budget presentation. There's 27 criteria used to assess how well the budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and the communication device. And the budgets are judged by a panel of three reviewers for the Government Finance Officers Association. So along with the award to the city, the GFOA also presents a certificate of recognition for budget preparation. And Teresa Malloy, our budget manager, her work is instrumental in this, and she's, she'll be getting that award here from the mayor in a second. I just want to point out, you know, we do get this award a lot, so it's kind of hard to explain it year after year the same ways. I think I do want to point out that, you know, Teresa Malloy, if you do not know how good a budget manager you have, let me assure you, you have one of the best. And this year has been an example of that. Besides the fact that she coordinates this annual budget process and makes sure that we meet the criteria to, to win this award, also in this, this current year, she's led us through the budget prioritization process. She's heavily involved in our HATS project, which is our, our financial and HR system replacement. And she actually now is, is currently taking over a co-project manager of that, that project. And then on top of that, you know, she's down here at almost every regular meeting with a budget ordinance, appropriation ordinance, or CIP amendment, because she's incredible in keeping on top of the details for this organization in those areas. So I think this recognition is, is well due. So with that, I do have the plaque here, and if the mayor can bring her certificate forward, maybe we can have a photo shoot here. Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is the Longmont Area Economic Council Quarterly Report, and Wendy Nafzinger is here to make that presentation.
Wrong. Always do it backwards. Mayor Coombs, members of council, and Wendy Nafzinger, interim president for the Longmont Area Economic Council. You all received our quarterly report in your packets, but I just want to hit a few highlights for, for you tonight. Starting with primary employer activity continues to be extremely active in our community. We're currently working with 33 active prospects considering Longmont for location or expansion. Nine of these companies are existing expansions. Our strengthened relationship with the city has been proving to be very effective in the meetings with companies looking to locate here. Sean and I spend a lot of time together, he just loves that, with companies, and they are, they're all impressed with the cooperation and ease of working with Longmont as a one-stop economic development office. That's going extremely well, and we hear a lot of good comments about that. I've also been actively working with Tim Barth at the airport on the promotion of the airport as a job center for aviation-related companies. I'll speak later about UAS USA that is now located at the airport and is asking for your support of their sublease as a job creator at the airport. I'm also working with Tim on the designation of an aviation development zone, which will give our community another, another tool in the toolbox to attract businesses here, and that'll be discussed later as well. We continue to support the recreation of our entrepreneurial center in Longmont, mostly through Scott at Tinker Mill, but our organization is a full partner in that, in that endeavor. And moving forward, we'll be participating heavily in working with Scott, Tinker Mill, and whatever becomes of that new entrepreneur center as it, as it evolves here. We're working closely with Amgen's leadership team, not only for, I think I mentioned before, but not only for the helping to find their employees' jobs outside of what might, of where, if anyone that doesn't go with Amgen to their other, other locations, but also to help market their site for development of a job center. And eventually, their buildings to the right clientele for lease or purchase, whichever they move forward with. They haven't made those decisions yet. We actually had a prospect this morning that came through specifically asking about existing biotech facilities that are available. So we put them directly in touch with the Amgen corporate real estate people in California. Excuse me. Our economic partners met this morning and went through all of our implementation plan to better reflect what has happened to date and to look at where we need to start focusing our efforts. We'll be reviewing this document monthly, so I made changes in that document per this, this morning's meeting. We're going to be spoke, at every other meeting subsequent to now, we're going to be focusing on specific sections and for interest, for example, when we meet with the workforce and the quality of life section of that, we're going to invite specific organizations that are part of that, which like InterCambio or El Comete. So we're going to have them at each of our meetings that, when we go through those sections so we can better understand what is going on and how we can better work together. Let's see. I also wanted to let you know that we're going to be late, the economic partners are going to be meeting later in November to start working together on coordinated marketing efforts for all of our economic partners. Of course, a large portion of this will be the Gigabit City, and we've invited LPC to our next meeting of that, so that we can start all working there to promote that along with everything else that we're doing in the community. We have completed the rollout plan, as you already know, for our advanced Longmont plan to the partner organizations. And at our breakfast presentation by Harold and Andy, we did a survey of participants from that breakfast for the first time ever, and overwhelmingly well-received by, by all for that presentation of the plan. I think the community is really embracing that plan and excited to be part of it and have input into what we're doing with that plan. Finally, we have begun the recruitment process with Bobby Keen's assistance, thank you Bobby, for our small, small business economic development manager. We were going to wait for the hire of our president to do that so that that person could hire that position, but have decided to be proactive and go ahead and hire that position so we can move forward with providing small business services out of our office in coordination with the city. With that, I would like to turn it over to our chairman of the board, Andy Bade, who has some more information for you.
Mayor, city councilman, the city council folks, I just want to greet you tonight. When we last talked to you at the end of last quarter, we had been hoping to be able to tell you that we had a president candidate on board. Our recruitment process continues, and we had actually proceeded through the end of the last quarter to the point of making an offer. Unfortunately, as is reported in the Times Call in the last couple of days, that individual declined our offer. We felt it was competitive, and we know from the individual that they resigned or declined for personal reasons. So our search continues. We anticipate at this point, just because of the logistics of the next round of interviews and some of the other things, that we will probably not get a president on board until the beginning of next year with holiday impact and things affecting both interviewers, interviewees. On behalf of the board, I would also like to thank the city's help in continuing to manage all the economic development activities, as well as their assistance in beginning the hiring for the small business position. The final thing is, we anticipate, as we've committed to you in the past, we're going to tighten up the way that we report our quarterly planning with an improved set of metrics and guidelines and measures that we've developed, and we'll begin doing that by the, for the Q4 2014 report, which will happen in the first part of 2015. So with that, unless there's any questions, that's our quarterly report for this time.
Any questions? No, thank you, Andy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess now it's time for public invited to be heard. First person on the list is Stanley Toll. Please come down, say your name and address.
Well, Mayor Coombs and council, my name is Stanley Toll, and I'm down here on a continuing situation where my car was seized by the city of Longmont with a no-notice tow. I've, we're having a tow hearing tomorrow, about 1:00, 1:30, I'm not quite sure, but it's right about that time. Usually it doesn't go right at that time. The issue here is that the car, my car was towed and seized, and there was no charge connected with it. And essentially, what the, and the city gets a kickback from the tow company, you know, 100 to $150, sort of like a nice way to impose a fine without having to charge anybody with offense. What I brought here last week was a notice that there's a state law that says that there has to be a criminal charge if you seize something. Now, what I am saying to everybody that can hear here is just because it's an old car, in my case, this, the facility can seize my car with no notice and no charge and get money out of you by, they can steal your anything. And that's what cities have done. They could take cash from you, they can take property from you, they can take anything. So I, anybody who could possibly make it to the tow hearing, I would encourage them to do it because I have been active trying to get the Ferguson nature of this court system that we have here under control. This has been going on for me for years. In fact, myself and another person, when we were charged with some crazy stuff like this, we went in there and found we were denied jury trials. And when we filed a complaint in the district court, we, we were retaliated. This Betty Rexford that did this with me, the judge filed legal actions against both of us. And Betty Rexford had her social security checks seized by the attorneys that the, that the judge had working for her. In my case, they had, they tried to collect $8,000 from me. Now, this is just filing complaints. Now, this is just filing complaints about not having jury trials. So anybody -- and then there's been a long period of attacks. Okay, the tow hearing is on tomorrow at 1:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Kielich. Oh, excuse me. Yeah, Clerk. Looks like an eye.
I've been gone so long, Mayor. You all forgot me.
Sorry.
Mayor Coombs, City Councilmembers, some of you are new, you don't know me, Paulie does, or Bonnie, I mean, worked together a lot in the '60s and '70s. But I was city manager here for 20 years, and I got old on the job.
So please tell us what your address is.
1760 Sunlight Drive.
Thank you.
And we've got a number of people here from Sunlight Drive. We've been working on a project with the city for four years now on the mowing capabilities and the maintenance, taking care of the rough-and-ready ditch. Now, for 18 years, and you'll receive -- city clerks got a copy, she'll make some copies for us. All the council wants to review the memorandums of agreement with the contractor, developer, and with the subdivision north of us on the east side of the ditch, gave the -- through the developer, gave the city most of this land that we're talking about that you're not mowing this year. Now, this is -- this summer with the rain and the weeds, this trail that runs through there has a sprinkler system that covers everything, and that was paid for by the developer and turned over to the city as usual. Now, this summer, the rain, you all know that flooded. Fortunately, the rough-and-ready head gate got washed away first and couldn't take water. You would have had a disaster on that side of town. But the thing is here, the city sprinkled that whole thing two times a week for the full summer. The weeds were over three foot tall, and no way met any part of your noxious weed ordinances. We talked to them, and evidently, they didn't care about noxious weeds in that area. But this is what we're complaining about, and we have a number of things, and there'll be some of the residents there. Could we have residents of Sunlight Drive stand? Raise your hand, you don't have to stand. Now, I've got a petition signed with 99.5 percent, one house out of 71 we couldn't find an owner on. And basically, in what we've got out there, there's somebody in the city told one of our neighbors that the federal government declared this a wetlands, and the city can't do nothing about what you're talking about.
So your three minutes is up now, so you'll have to let some of your other people in line speak. Thank you for coming down and speaking.
Okay, can I present this to you?
Sure.
But I guess in closing, we've got to get something done. It's not livable for senior citizens out there, the mosquitoes, et cetera.
Bob Wilson.
Mayor and Council, I'm Bob Wilson, 1818 Sunlight Drive. First of all, I'd like to thank the, I guess it's the Parks Department. I live right next door to the collection pond, which is about 1820, Sunlight Drive. This is the first year, the best year they've ever done taking care of it. Took a lot of years to get grass to grow, then they let it die. Now it's back. They've done a good job of watering, good job of mowing, looks beautiful. Then on to what Charlie was working on. The city decided to mow one more width up and down next to the bike path. That bike path is used by many people of the city and probably other places, too. It's a very, very nice addition to the city, and the mowing was done very well before 18 years I've been there. And last year, they decided just to mow that one strip, let the rest go. I can't remember the term, it's a -- it's a -- they were just going to let it grow so that the animals and all that. Well, all we've got are snakes and skunks and a few mice. That's the wildlife that we have accumulated now. We don't like the looks of it, I don't think anybody else likes the look of it. The noxious weeds are there. We have to take care of ours, but they didn't get taken care of. So it really looks poor. I think it should be mowed up to the ditch like it was before. As far as financially, the mowers go back and forth three or four times. I don't know what they're doing, but they mow one strip, all the rest of the time they're just back and forth. They could easily spend that same gas and have the whole thing mowed like it was before. Thank you.
Strider Benson.
Greetings, Mayor Coombs, Council. I'm Strider Benson, 951 17th Avenue, Longmont. Yesterday, Vic Myers, the congressional candidate from our local CD4, filed 10 charges to the Federal Elections Commission, and I will mention two of them. The Denver Post-owned Longmont Times Call did refuse to interview any other candidates than Ken Buck. The Denver Post-owned Times Call has not been to any event or public appearance in which Ken Buck's opponents were present and/or speaking. Longmont Times Call used to be a local newspaper. We no longer have a local newspaper. Democracy cannot survive without a free press. But folks can be drug to stampede based on fear, like Ebola. How about that? And travel bans. Now, gun fanatics and their NRA masters fought to prevent any sanity or humanity in federal policy on guns. Last week in Marysville, we had another killing, multiple killing in a high school. The 89th school shooting since the murder of 21st graders in Newtown, the 89th one. Zero Americans have died of Ebola. More than 32,000 Americans die each year by gun violence. But the Republican Senate filibuster have blocked from our having -- our country having a surgeon general because the president's nominee said this is a health problem. Think about it. Elections are right now. Vote and vote, Sane. Thank you.
Thank you. Reyes Ramirez.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs. Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Reyes Ramirez, and I work with the Longmont YMCA. I'm the community engagement coordinator there. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of David Friedland and EcoCycle. We are trying to drum up support for their curbside composting program. I am just a local community person who is interested in it, who wants you guys to know that we are trying to grassroots it, get some local support, and hopefully, when it comes about, you guys can support it. Secondly, I wanted to also comment on the great work that Dia de los Muertos is. I personally know Carmen Ramirez, and I know that they do great work, that it is a great event, that it's something that is -- shows the inclusiveness and power of the city to be a great community. And lastly, I wanted to invite you personally to come out to the YMCA, see our community garden, see the good work that we're doing out there. I think that the EcoCycle composting ties in nicely with that, and it's something that would be beneficial to all of us. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Beverly Stokes.
Beverly Stokes, 1760 Sunlight Drive, Longmont, Colorado 80504. I too am here to speak on the condition of the rough-and-ready ditch and the mowing. And I've had the wonderful opportunity to work with Councilmember Bagley and City Manager Harold Dominguez. At any rate, we are here again for the fourth time to ask you to please consider mowing the rough-and-ready ditch to the standards that we've all enjoyed, which is, by the way, in our contract, our agreement that we all have, and I do believe that you will have a copy of that agreement in your packet, which states, "The property is to be maintained in perpetuity by the city," seeing as how we all subordinated that land in order for you to create the path and to commemorate your rough-and-ready ditch, which we were told is a historical ditch. So therefore, we would appreciate it if you would continue to treat it with the honor and respect of mowing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Lynn Mix.
Mayor Coombs and Council. I'm also here in support of mowing the rough-and-ready ditch. We live right behind it, and I walk that ditch at least two to three times a day with my husband and I walking the dog. And we have been blessed this last year with a lot more rodents. We see dead mice and rats and snakes, and I'm not a fond person of snakes. And it's just not a healthy place to be. And since we have allowed the grass to grow, we notice a lot more people that are walking their dogs that aren't picking up after them. You know, it's an eyesore, and it doesn't look neat, and people aren't taking care of it as they're walking their pets. So I really think we need to get it mowed. And then in addition to that, on the way to the park, all of the kids that are taking part in the neighborhood park, Rough and Ready Park, go by that area, and I don't think it's a healthy environment for kids to have to deal with dead mice on the walkway or any of the other things that are crawling out and dying. So I really think it needs to be mowed. Thank you.
Thank you. So that ends Public Invited to Be Heard. Why don't we take a five-minute break? Switch your legs. Okay, can we come back together and get our meeting started again?
Mayor Coombs, are you ready for your first item? Your first item is ordinance 2014-57, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Longmont, Colorado Storm Drainage Revenue Bonds Series 2014, and pledging the storm drainage revenues and certain other revenues of the city for payment of the bonds. Jim Golden, our Finance Director, will make this presentation.
Mayor Coombs, Members of Council, Jim Golden, Director of Finance. So as you know, in June of this year, our voters approved the issuance of $20.20 million and $500,000 of storm drainage revenue bonds to finance improvements to our storm drainage system related to flood-related improvements. We have a number of staff here tonight, as well as some consultants that worked on this, although since we have had a couple of debt issuances already this year, I think these consultants might be considered part-time employees at this point in time, but they are happy to be back here in the council chambers once more. So Jim Benier from First Southwest is our financial advisor, and Dee Weiser from Butler Snow is our bond counsel. These firm has put together this ordinance, as well as documents that it authorizes that are involved in the sale of the bond, which include the official statement, the registrar -- well, I would say a number of people go put together that official statement, but a registrar and paying agent agreement, and the continuing disclosure certificate. All those are authorized by the ordinance that is up for consideration tonight. The schedule for the bond sale is we will be going to sale on the morning of November 12th, Wednesday, a couple of weeks off from now. We received a double-A rating on our bonds with a stable outlook, which I communicated to you last week by email. That was from Standard and Poor's, and that is consistent with the same rating that we received on the 2008 storm drainage bonds. So that's good for us. It was, I would say, was not unexpected. So the financial advisor is estimating that our interest rate on this bond issue could be in the neighborhood of about 3.2%, which would result in a debt service payment of about $1.5 million per year. So with that, like I said, I'm here, they're here, and we also have staff from Public Works Natural Resources if you had questions about the use of these monies. But other than that, that's all I had to present on it.
Do Councilmembers have any questions before I open up the public hearing on this? Okay, I'll go ahead and I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2014-57. If anybody from public would like to speak on this. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2014-57. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move that we pass ordinance 2014-57.
All right, so move the second, and let's vote. Okay, if passes seven to zero.
Okay, Mayor Coombs, your second item on public hearings is item 8B, which is the day after Thanksgiving. Let me read the ordinance resolution, then Dan Kramer will have a presentation. It's ordinance 2014-58, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 3.04 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Personnel Rules to add the day after Thanksgiving as a city holiday. A company that is Resolution 2014-99, which is a resolution granting in 2014, the day after Thanksgiving as a holiday to refer to regular employees covered by a collective bargaining agreement. And Dan Kramer, Assistant City Attorney, and also our Employee Advisory Group Vice Chair, is here to make the presentation.
Mayor and Council, Dan Kramer, Assistant City Attorney. I'm not here in that capacity. I'm here in the capacity as the Vice I'm here in the capacity as the Vice Chair of the, or a Vice Chair, Karen Friesner, another Vice Chair of the Employee Advisory Group is here as well. I won't rehash anything from the presentation that you heard in July at the study session. If you have any questions on any of that, of course, available to answer questions. The ordinance you have in front of you has the same intent as what we were talking about at the study session and the same intent as what you received at first reading. It turns out that adding a holiday is actually kind of complicated, so we made a few changes just to clarify what the ordinance was doing. To be clear, it only applies, the ordinance does, to employees not covered under a collective bargaining agreement. So we added the words "who are not covered by a collective bargaining agreement" three times in the ordinance. Second, it corrects the difference in how fire shifts work compared to how other employees' shifts work. So that's the difference you see in 11.2 hours versus eight hours in order to give employees the holiday this year in 2014. And finally, you'll see there's a resolution that does cover collective bargaining employees, but only for 2014. Anything after that would be subject to negotiation. That's all I have for presentation. Happy to answer questions.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Dan, did we run this by all the collective bargaining units and everyone else, just to be, get everyone's blessing to say?
I personally spoke to Steve Schultz, President of...
FOP?
FOP, and Ron Graham, who's the President of the Fire Group.
Everyone's given their... Okay, cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson? So this won't create a situation where people in a union won't get the holiday and everybody else will? Correct. Okay, that's fine. Councilmember Bagley?
Hello, Professor. I only want to know why we're talking about getting an extra day off and how much the employees get paid so far apart on the agenda? Because this is like 9B and then we're going to talk about however much everybody gets paid on 9F. Was that your doing, Professor?
I wish.
I'm just kidding. I'm just bored, so trying to make light of tonight.
Councilmember Levinson?
And I think this is your one and only time to actually be part of writing an ordinance that you're promoting. So, you know, I don't think that, kind of going in the same vein as Councilmember Bagley's comment, probably the one and only time you'll get to do this, so. And I know this has been a long time coming with employees and I just want to congratulate you on a very positive process that it came through and I think that's why all of us are, you know, asking very powder puff questions and making comments like this, because it was a very good process and the evidence and the data you collected, what other cities do and how our number of holidays equate to what the standard practice of the region is very helpful to guiding a decision.
Thank you, Councilmember Levinson. We're always looking to make this process even better. Okay, I'll now open up the public hearing on Ordinance 2014-58. Is anybody from the public that'd like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move Ordinance 2014-58 amended.
You'll need to substitute that first, I think.
We have to... Okay.
Councilmember Santos?
Well, it says approve as amended, so well, okay, then I would move the substitution.
Okay, let's vote on the substitution. Okay, that passes seven to zero? Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, the staff is so good at providing what our options are, so I'll just go on by what it says in here. So now I would move Ordinance 2014-58 as substituted.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes. Now we have the Resolution 2014-99. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move Resolution 2014-99.
Okay, let's vote on that. Okay, that passes seven to zero?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Your next item is Ordinance 2014-59, "A Bill for an Ordinance Authorizing the City of Longmont to amend the lease of real property known as Vance Ram Municipal Airport Hangar, Parcel 4, to CAG International Doing Business as Elite Aviation." And Tim Barth, our Airport Manager, is here to make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Tim Barth, City's Airport Manager. This is kind of the continuation of the first reading when we pulled this off consent and discussed it. Before you is a basic lease amendment allowing Chippewa Aerospace slash Elite Aviation, or FBO, to Subly's property, to UAS USA, a unmanned aerial vehicle manufacturer. And so I want to make sure that we use that term UAVs and not drones. I wanted to let you know that if you had any questions of Elite or Chippewa, both Brian and Ally are here that can answer any of those questions. And just to give you an idea how this is starting to play out, we're going to have a brief presentation tonight by UAS USA so that you can kind of become familiar with their business. Interestingly enough, I had a conversation with the state of Colorado today. We are the only airport in the state of Colorado with UAV manufacturing, assembly, and retail sales. And later on in your agenda, you'll notice on Item Number H on the consent agenda, there's an application in there to become an aviation development zone at the airport, which will allow employers like Chippewa slash Elite and UAS USA to actually take part of a state program in which they can get $1,200 tax rebate for their, all of their new employees for a calendar year. There's only about four or five other airports in Colorado that got that designation. So it's another tool in our toolbox that we can use to lure these types of companies out to the airport for economic development tools. So with that, I was going to introduce Skip Miller. He is the owner and President and CEO of UAS USA. He's got a few slides he will run you through. And then either Elite, myself, or Skip, we'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Hello, my name's Skip Miller. As mentioned, I'm the CEO and founder of UAS USA. That's Unmanned Aircraft Systems USA. And I've got to thank Tim for working with our company, Wendy for encouraging UAS USA to land at Longmont, and Gabe, who we met with in Boulder earlier on this year when we saw that there was some interesting drone activity that may land in Longmont. So I'm pretty proud to be here. I basically flew model airplanes from when I was a youngster. And if you look at the slide, you'll see on the left, that's myself in front of my dad's 56 Ford, and that's a radio-controlled transmitter on the hood. And I began aviation career at that time. On the right side of the slide, you'll actually see a photograph. That's myself. I became the first world champion of radio-controlled soaring back in 1977, and I'm still a current national and world level competitor today. As a matter of fact, I just returned from a significant competition in Washington DC where I placed second overall in the United States by six tenths of a point out of 11,000. We have been flying silently and efficiently over Boulder for five years. I developed the aircraft, which is in the center of the slide, the Tempest, for the University of Colorado. And that was designed for weather research. And the mission was very successful, and that's the workhorse of the CU program. I've got a customer list there that, who we've developed, pardon me, I'll put my glasses on to see that. First one that's on there, and so we're an active company. We landed in Longmont two weeks ago today at the Longmont Airport. University of Colorado, we did tornado and thunderstorm weather research. We've done high-altitude missions for the Naval Research Lab. We're in Precision Agricultural Program at University of Nebraska. We have Raytheon, which I can't really disclose the things we've done with them. My most recent is MIT, where we're dropping vaccines in remote areas in Africa. There's a company that's listed there, that's Black Swift Technology, that's an autopilot company that we're parallel with that is also a Boulder company. We're working on mining applications with magnetometers for gem systems and we do custom designs of aircraft for customers as well, start to finish. This is the original team five years ago. That's the University of Colorado team with the PhD scientists. So that aircraft flew for the first time five years ago and that became our workhorse aircraft. And we have an excellent relationship with the University of Colorado and many, many other universities in the United States. This is a photograph taken when we had a very successful mission. You can see it's quite some time ago. First landing aircraft in a Supercell Thunderstorm. Again, that's our Tempest aircraft. It's an electric, looks very different and elegant compared to many of the images that... This is a civil service aircraft designed for inception to not be any military application whatsoever. That's the photograph of the Tempest. Again, as I mentioned, that's our workhorse. This is another picture of a landing zone where we landed in Colorado. It gives you an idea of we're very different than what the public perception is. We're thrilled to have landed in Longmont. We look forward to being a very significant addition to the community as well as to the integration of unmanned aircraft systems in the upcoming years. I think you'll find this going to be a very, very exciting market that is going to be very surprising to everyone. And thanks for your time.
Thank you. I'll now open this up for public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak on Ordinance 2014-159? I think Wendy has signed up.
Mayor Coombs, Members of Council. The Economic Council and the city have been working with UAS USA since August on their location in Longmont. Councilmen Santos and Sean met with the company back in August when Mr. Miller read about our cities interested in working with and supporting UAV-related companies. In October, well, after Sean and Gabe had met with Mr. Miller, Gabe gave that referral to me and I proceeded to contact Mr. Miller and met with him and talked to him about why Longmont would be a great place for him to expand. In October, Mr. Miller contacted me to say that his plans for expansion in Boulder had fallen through and he wanted to look at the Longmont Airport for a location. Through the hard work of Tim Barth at the airport and Fly Elite Aviation, that deal was done through a sublease at the airport and thus has generated five new jobs here in Longmont with great potential for company growth. This being the second primary employer located at the airport, coupled with the opportunity to designate our airport as an aviation development zone, is just the beginning of putting Longmont on the map for aviation-related job creation. I would ask for council support in favor of the sublease for UAS USA. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on Ordinance 2014-59. Councilmember Santos?
Mayor Coombs, I'm obviously going to move this along. Unless anybody else has anything to say, I would move Ordinance 2014-59.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Oh, Councilmember, excuse me. I would like to ask Mr. Miller, by the way, I used photos of your airplane to advertise the University of Colorado because I found it very cool. But I would like to know what percentage of your business is with Raytheon?
Oh, well, Raytheon, obviously that's a military customer, so I'm not really at liberty to talk too much about...
No, I know.
But a very small percentage, I'd say maybe, it might be one or two percent.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, got a motion that's been seconded. Let's vote. Passes seven to zero?
Mayor Coombs, your next item is, let me make sure I got the right one. Ordinance 2014-60, "A Bill for an Ordinance Amending Title 4, Chapter 4.6 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Golf Fees." And we do not have a formal staff presentation on this item.
Okay, I'll... Anybody in the council have any comments before we open up the public hearing? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Ordinance 2014-60. Is anybody from Public that'd like to speak on this ordinance?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. My name is Kurt Finley. I live at 1711 Drake Street. I'm here tonight representing the Longmont Golf Advisory Board, and I just wanted to stand up here and urge you tonight to support the golfing fees recommendation made by the Gulf Longmont staff that has been unanimously approved by the board. I'd also like you to know that the staff has taken a comprehensive and compelling, competitive analysis and provided that to us for the fee schedule changes. And the board has taken seriously its responsibility to maintain the self-supporting nature of the golf fund in supporting those changes. So I'd just like to urge your support. We just keep in mind the goal is a quality golfing experience for the public in Longmont. Thank you.
Councilmember Finley?
After that great public input, I would like to move Ordinance 2014-60.
All right, Ordinance 2014... Oh, maybe I didn't... Excuse me. Was there anybody else that wanted to speak at the public hearing? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Now...
Would you like me to move that again? I would like to move the Ordinance 2014-60 again.
All right, now we'll vote. Okay, that passes six to one with Councilmember Santos descending.
Okay, your next item are your 2015 budget ordinances. Ordinance 2014-61 is a bill for an ordinance fixing and levying taxes upon the real and personal property within the city of Longmont for the year 2014 to pay budgeted city expenses for the 2015 fiscal year. Ordinance 2014-62 is a bill for an ordinance fixing and levying taxes upon the real and personal property within the city of Longmont, I'm sorry, within the Longmont Downtown Development District for the year 2014 to pay budgeted expenses for the Longmont Downtown Development Authority for the 2015 fiscal year. The next item is Ordinance 2014-63, "A Bill for an Ordinance Adopting the Budget for the City of Longmont for the Year 2015." And your final budget ordinance is 2014-64, "A Bill for an Ordinance Making Appropriations for the Expenses and Liabilities of the City for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1st, 2015." And Mayor Coombs, you can have one public hearing on all of these, but you'll need to vote on them separately for it.
Okay, any questions for Council before we open the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to open the public... Oh, excuse me, Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm just curious, what percentage of our budget actually comes from the real and personal property tax that we're about to vote on? Do we know? Right now Jim's like, "Man, I was watching YouTube videos." I could have asked this before, but I just thought of it now. Facebook? Oh, Facebook.
Kidding. Mayor Coombs, Members of Council, and I can't answer you percentage-wise. It's about $14 million of property tax in the general fund, though.
A little less than 5%.
So you have a $70 million general fund budget, you have a $275 million overall budget. All right, thank you.
I'm going to vote for it, but in general, I just hate personal property tax. The idea of buying something, you work hard and you still got to pay the government. I think it's a crock. I think we're dependent on it, but just in general, it's, I think it's a bad idea.
So do I. Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing on Ordinance 2014-61 through 64. Is anybody from the public that'd like to speak on any of these four ordinances? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on Ordinance 2014-61 through 64. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move Ordinance 2014-61.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Levinson. Let's vote. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move ordinance 2014-62.
Okay, that passes. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move ordinance 2014-63.
Passes seven to zero. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just the operating budget, councilmember Bagley. I move ordinance 2014-64.
Passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is ordinance 2014-65, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2014. And we do not have a formal staff presentation on this item.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 2014-65. Is anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2014-65. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would like to move ordinance 2014-65.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by, yes, by councilmember Moore. So let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Okay, your next item of business is your consent agenda. Item 9A is ordinance 2014-66, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2014. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for November 10th. Item 9B is ordinance 2014-67, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 14.20 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Utility Bills and Chapter 14.48 on Broadband Services. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for November 10th. Item 9C is ordinance 2014-68, a bill for an ordinance amending Section 3.04.885 of the Longmont Municipal Code, adopting amended and restated pension plans. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for November 10th. Item 9D is ordinance 2014-69, a bill for an administrative ordinance approving the conveyance of the city's interest in the Vance Grand Civic Auditorium located at Skyline High School to the St. Brain Valley School District RE1J. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for November 10th. Item 9E is Resolution 2014-100, amending the financial policies of the city of Longmont for 2015. Item 9F is Resolution 2014-101, approving the 2015 classification and pay plan for city employees. Item 9G is Resolution 2014-102, to provide input into the United States Environmental Protection Agency rulemaking concerning the definition of waters of the United States. Item 9H is Resolution 2014-103, approving the submission of an application to the state of Colorado to register the Vance Grand Municipal Airport as an aviation development zone. Item 9I is Resolution 2014-104, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Scientific Culture and Facilities District for a grant agreement. Item 9J is approve one capital improvement program amendment, which is D-39, the St. Brain Channel improvements. And Item 9K is approve the Longmont Gateway Business Improvement District 2015 operating plan and budget. And staff does not need to pull any items from this agenda.
Councilmember Levison.
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to pull 9K.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd like to move the consent agenda minus 9K.
Okay, the consent agenda's been moved to minus 9K. And it's been seconded, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
And Item 9K is the Gateway Business Improvement District 2015 operating plan and budget. And Sean will address any questions.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. So I was reading through the agreement and it appears that this report was actually due to us by our agreement with this district by July. And I know that the, there are no expenditures and, you know, in fact, the report under additional information in the city talks about our oversight of district activities. And it said prior to, prior, the prior operating plan stated that the BID would provide a report to city on its proposed activities for the upcoming year on or before July 1st. And they said, given the lack of activity, this schedule was not met and the BID asked the city's forgiveness on this matter. And, you know, they gave us our brief report. I mean, the law firm that sent this information has six offices nationwide. You know, it is, you know, I don't think that just because there's no activity that we would get lax in requiring prompt reporting, and this is over two months overdue. So was there any reason given? There was no reason given in the documents.
Mayor Coombs, councilmember Levison, Sean Lewis, Assistant City Manager. We have typically not required or had, if you will, a tickler filed that would remind us to contact bids, particularly these that are inactive, to send these reports. However, I have asked our redevelopment manager, David Starnes, to start monitoring that to ensure we get these on a more timely basis. We appreciate the heads up this afternoon with regard to this item. We did reach out to the law firm that submitted this and have not received a response yet in terms of why. It was late, but we do have a local board member, it's Zylings, Sumeesh, who's on the LAC board, and we will also get with her to encourage the board to encourage their law firm to be more timely in their response on these reports.
It's just that, you know, the Business Improvement District for Downtown Development Authority files their paperwork on time. I mean, and they have a much smaller staff than a law, a law firm with six national office locations. You know, everybody else has now started filing, even Harvest Junction that had compliance problems in the past with filing their reports, have filed them in a timely fashion. I just think it sets a bad precedent for the city when, you know, someone files a report and says, oops, you know, there was no activity, so we didn't think it was relevant to file things on time. So I just would, as a matter of policy, make sure that we stay on top of it too. Because otherwise, how would we know? I mean, not having an explanation, but how do they admit they are knowing that they're tardy? But I, you know, I'm willing to forgive them this time, but I really think that, you know, it's not necessarily a matter that we have to stay on top of it, but we do expect compliance when we have agreements.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just, in the event that you weren't going to say you were going to be forgiving, I was going to be, let's be forgiving, just because I don't know what they plan on doing, but in the future, should Gateway and Zylings want to expand, I think that's definitely a good thing for the city, so. But I am in agreement with my esteemed colleague, councilmember Levison, that yeah, it's good to have people stick to deadlines, it's just not sure what city staff can do. But this is definitely one that we want to keep, so I'm not going to move it, you can move it, since you pulled it.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Is Zylings the only property owner out there? The reason I ask is that there are only Zylings personnel being appointed to the board.
Yes, sir, I believe that all of the property within the bid is wholly owned by Zylings. We can get clear, I'm not 100% sure, but we can certainly get that answer for you. Again, because it hasn't been an, it's been an inactive district, we have not had reason to do a lot of research and work with this district, but David Starnes, our redevelopment manager, submitted the council communication. He wasn't able to be here tonight. We can certainly get an exact, for sure, answer for you on that question.
Okay, well, we're voting on it tonight. So, this is just, the consent agenda, coming in late is not going to really help this spoke tonight.
We can certainly push this off to another meeting if you like. Again, this is simply a state statute that requires them to submit their budget annually to the city. They've done that.
I understand, my point is the board of directors, being only Zylings personnel.
Councilmember Levison.
You know, this was not, this was not, I'm not making a big deal of this because of all these issues. It's just that if the state statute requires compliance on time, we should, as a matter of public policy, keep up on these things. I think that there was an adequate explanation, well, adequate enough for me, councilmember Moore, as to why the appointees of the board were just Zylings employees. That was in the documentation. And I know we've seen this report before and it's been on time before, so that's why I also wanted to pull it off, because I don't recall if this had been consistent law firm of Spencer, Fablet, and Brown, or if it's a new law firm. I just want to make sure that they've gotten the message that we want prompt compliance. And if they could provide a follow-up letter with information as to, you know, what was the impediment when there was no activity, no change in the board of directors, that they failed to comply with the deadline, then, you know, to me, it was like, basically, they could have phoned it in with last year's paperwork and changed the dates.
Councilmember Bagley.
I don't, I mean, I don't want, I don't, I mean, then again, we're losing Amgen, you know, I mean, I just don't think it's that big of a deal. I'm saying that, I mean, there's no need to go to war or chafe, or, I'm just saying that, I mean, it's not that big of a deal, I just say we pick our battles, and if somebody said to me that I needed to get my attorney to write, I mean, that's going to be like a thousand dollar bill, which isn't a lot, but it chafed me, so, I mean.
I would like to point out that Zylings does donate their land for these cyclocross races that brings a lot of people from Boulder out here spending their money for stuff. So they do a lot of good things for this community that a lot of people aren't aware of, so I appreciate their business here. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, I would agree that we need to get some sort of explanation why this was turned in late, but I think we're looking for a little, making a very big bump in the road into a very large mountain. I move 9K.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is general business, and you are the Longmont, you will need to convene as the Longmont General Improvement District, and then I'll read the resolutions.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. One of my favorite things to do. Mayor Coombs, I move that we recess the Longmont City Council and convene as the board of directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
The first item is Resolution LGID 2014-03, a resolution fixing and levying taxes on real and personal property within the Longmont General Improvement District Number One for the year 2014 to pay budgeted expenses of the district for the 2015 fiscal year.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move our LGID 2014-03.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I don't recall and it wasn't a packet. What is Longmont General Improvement District Number One? What area is that? I know what downtown is, that's, that's easy.
Stumper questions today. Mayor Coombs, members of council, so it's from third to sixth, and then it's Kim Bar, Kaufman, but there are some small exceptions to that. So like, over by Roosevelt Place is also part of the GID, so it.
So it's downtown again related, correct?
Yes.
And it's only the district members that are paying that property tax?
Correct.
All right, cool.
What we need to move, okay, that's right, we can move down, second, let's vote.
I think I messed that up again. Here, I'm sorry. You need to stop. Now try.
Okay, now let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
I think I did make you vote twice, I'm sorry. The next item is Resolution LGID D 2014-04. This is a resolution of the board of directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One, adopting the annual budget for the district for fiscal year 2015.
Councilmembers, excuse me, Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move Resolution LGID 2014-04.
Okay, that was seconded by Commissioner Bagley. Let's, councilmember, excuse me, Commissioner Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to note that even our small organization with only one local office in Boulder County has managed to collect a budget and spend it in a timely fashion.
Okay, that passes seven to zero. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move that we adjourn as the board of directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One and reconvene as the Longmont City Council.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Now we're back in city council mode. Okay, now's the time for final call, publicly invited to be heard. Does anybody like to speak at final call, publicly invited to be heard? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close final call, publicly invited to be heard. So now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I do think we need to address the weed mowing of the rough and ready ditch. I think it needs to be mowed, it's a mess. And I understand that we want it to be naturalized and we have this policy of naturalizing the ditch area, but it's nasty and those people were promised when they built their house that it would be mowed, and I think it is, it is our obligation to do that. So I would move that we mow the rough and ready ditch.
Councilmember Santos.
I'm waiting to see if there's a second there.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Santos.
I'll wait, I'll wait to see if there's, you want to have a hope? No, no, I don't. I think we should discuss it, there's a second. I've got some finishing to do. I was going to go on to something else, so, are we going to have discussion on this topic?
Okay, yeah. Councilmember Christiansen. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you. I think, Mayor Coombs, thank you. I think that, I seconded it because I think that you've got a lot of concerned people along that ditch, and I wanted just to share with my council members, kind of, what's going on. You've got, you've got a neighborhood that, they were right, and that everybody signed a petition, and you've heard today that, I've spoken with the neighbors, I've walked that ditch three times, talked to the neighbors once, talked to the neighbors and city staff a second time, and then last Friday went out with Dale Rattamaker and Harold Dominguez and myself, and we went and visited all kinds of ditches, and we analyzed and looked at, what is a greenway? Longmont Greenways, that specifically talks about the residential greenways and the non-residential greenways and our mowing standards. And so what I observed was, in And so, what I observed was, in walking behind the folks on Sunlight Drive, they are right about some things and wrong about others. And so, just to make sure that we're all clear, they are right that it doesn't look good. The, when you walk along the ditches elsewhere, there are natural grasses, not weeds, but natural grasses that look really pretty as a result of the city mowing a strip next to the sidewalks and trails next to the ditch. However, that is not how rough and ready looks, for whatever reason. I don't know if it's because the city's mowing too little, meaning that I don't know if sometimes we're mowing and other times we're not. I don't know if the residents are out there mowing it themselves, but it's definitely not the same as the other trails. I don't know why that is. The other issues, we also had a meeting last week by phone, myself, by the way, this is my ward, by the way, it's not like I'm just going rogue on you all, you know, I've become the ditch monitor, but the, although my mom told me one day I'd do that, if I didn't work hard, but anyway, so the, but we also had a conversation, Harold, myself and Charlie Clerich, the fine gentleman who was such a fine public servant and was the city manager of City Longmont for two decades, even before Gordon Pedro. And, you know, we've got some options, and I think that before we vote on this, I think what we need to do is explore the options and answer, why is the ditch looking differently? Because if the citizens over there are trying to mow and making it worse, or if the city's mowing not enough and making it worse, we need to find out what's going on. And I also think that we need to talk about, what are the options? Okay, option one is you ignore the problem, which is what we shouldn't do, which is what we've done for four years and which is why I seconded the motion, and I also don't think we should vote tonight because I don't think we have enough votes to pass it. So, I think that we should look at it. So, if they're watching me right now, that's the reason why I'm saying wait. So, number one, we can ignore the problem. Number two, we can say, let's figure out what the solution is and get it looking like everything else in Longmont, and what do we need to do to get there? And then, number three, we need to look to determine if we are going to start just mowing there, what will the impacts be elsewhere? You know, so if we just say, well, we're gonna mow there but nowhere else, what's gonna happen? And then, the fourth option is, do we want to change our mowing standards into more of a hybrid where we do, you know, manicure the trail versus having natural-looking grasses? But, yes, there are weeds there. Yes, it is overgrown with just regular grass and does not look good at all. The other thing is today, I read the documents, I don't think the city is legally committed. I mean, I'm not representing the city. I don't think we're legally committed to keep doing something we were doing prior. I think they're mistaken on that, but that doesn't mean that we don't do something about it. And so, I don't think we should be looking at this as a, well, I mean, we have to because we, it's legally, it's legally an obligation. I don't want to get into a legal conversation because I think that they have real concerns, and even if there's no coercion or legal threat, we need to address this problem. So, I don't want to engage it from a legal perspective because I don't think that the citizens in my ward would be happy with the results. So, I would ask that we pull back, and so, we've had a chance to gather the data, and regardless of what we do, you know, work with the citizens over there, 99.5% of them who have signed a petition, in order to figure out what should we do, how should we do it, and do this with information and data rather than taking a vote, having it fail, and then everybody really upset and just not making any progress. So, those are my thoughts.
Councilmember Levinson?
Mr. Rattamaker, could you come to the podium, please? I don't know, can you remind me how many times we've discussed this issue with council in the last six, seven, almost seven years, like, four, five times?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levinson, we were last in front of you with a detailed discussion on August 20th of 2013, and I actually went back today and watched that video. The discussion you're having today is sort of similar to the discussion you had on the 20th.
It's Groundhog Day. Oh, my goodness.
I don't know if it's that, but, you know, to the issue that Mayor Proton Bagley is bringing up, I am compelled at some level to consider things like that, too. There's times in your life where you're trying things, and if they're not accepted, they're not accepted. I think the dilemma for the community or the council to consider is, just as you laid out, do we just do it here on the rough and ready because we have a petition? Do we do it citywide? So, I, we can certainly come back and have another sort of robust discussion around this issue, but I think the things to consider are, do you want to amend your policy? Do you want to make an exception to your policy? Do you want to try to establish the rough and ready so that it is similar to the other greenways, which I believe can be done and would occur over time? I don't believe that is necessarily what these particular homeowners, in my estimation, would accept or would be okay with. And I think in prior meetings, we've told you roughly what those costs are, what the situation is, and so, as we said last August, it really comes down to a question of, how much do you want to mow? How do you balance that with the intended purpose of a greenway, one of which, one of which is a wildlife corridor to your community? I hope that the best practice is that you do not mow right up to the edge of the ditch. I don't know if that's exactly what these folks are expecting, though. We did modify after last August. We started mowing on both sides of the greenway, or on the trail, and that's what we brought forward then in April of this year with the new brochures on what we're doing, so we certainly want to get, here's the thing, I'd like to be able to solve things, too. So, I get that. I don't know that there's an easy solution out here that isn't A, going to need to be replicated throughout the community in order to have some equity, or B, going to result in some additional costs that we would need to find the resources to do.
And Dale, I guess the other part of it is, could this issue be exacerbated by the fact that we've had so much rain? And things are going a little wild out there, so maybe there were dormant seeds, noxious weeds, that because of the volume of rain and the extraordinarily warm late summer conditions we've had entering into fall, that this really is in a one-off year that we've had, I mean, it's been, it's been an extremely wet fall so far in a lot of weeds.
No, that can contribute to it. What I would suggest is probably contributing to it as much as anything is that the irrigation systems have not been completely shut down and modified, which then allows for the continued propagation and growing of the non-native grass species that beg for the mowing kind of thing, because it looks like, it looks more like lawn than it looks like a natural grass area. And so, we can take actions, again, to more aggressively seed in there with native grasses. I think we're doing, you know, I don't want to differ with council, but my experience along ditches is that I don't think it's a disaster. I think it's, it's, I can show you disasters out by my farm, but, so, I can appreciate that it's not what people who have lived there a long time prefer to see in their backyard. And I, I get that. But I do think we can establish more of a natural grass, which is maybe more of what's in Mr. Councilmember Moore's in our neighborhood and some of the other ones, like along the oligarchy and other areas. Part of the reason those happened are, are two-fold. One is we're not irrigating them as much, so those natural grasses tend to take over. The native, by natural, I mean native. And they were designed that way to begin with. And, and those are two things that we are needing to change if you want to have some consistency and look along your greenway system.
I guess I would appreciate, before we try to make a decision if we're going to do it one-off, is to realize the cost. And I know the neighborhood is also, in past years, come to say, we'll pay the cost. And, you know, trying to start going on a one-off for a neighborhood that wants additional mowing, then there'll be a neighborhood that wants additional servicing for their neighborhood park and their neighborhood association's willing to pay for that. And then, do we just one-off every need when there's someone with a deep enough pocket to pay?
We answered that question last August, I believe Councilmember Finley asked that question, and my answer was that we have done it sort of on an ad hoc basis, and that if the policy of the council is to do that, which will result in a different look and feel along your greenways based on the desires and the financial abilities of the neighborhoods to do different standards, you can do that, you can direct us to do that. Again, I leave that policy to the council to try to decide, is that what you want in your community? But we have done that occasionally, not just on the rough and ready, I think we've done it maybe on the oligarchy up in the, in the shores development up by Macintosh, so, again, that's the same answer we gave last August, so, this does feel a little Groundhog-ish.
You know what, last Thursday, I had a community bike ride where we rode through there, and I remember riding on the rough and ready ditch there thinking to myself, well, this doesn't look that, that bad. I mean, I thought this was gonna look like way worse or something, way, you know, hearing all these complaints at Coffee Council, I actually thought, pretty decent, maybe I just need to walk it, you know, from riding a bike pretty fast through it. But, you know, I did notice this year was a really strange year for weeds because of the flood. We had like three times more weeds, we had the weeds that we'd never seen in our yard, so I think that was part of the problem.
Certainly, the spring started out that way.
Right, yeah.
Because you had an incredibly wet fall, which allowed for the germination of those weeds, if you will, I think throughout the city, probably in your yards and along every alleyway.
What keeps this from just throttling back the sprinkling system there quite a bit? And maybe trying something else before we?
It's a great question, and that's one that I think, what I can tell you, though, is if we do that in the absence, you know, I don't necessarily want to problem-solve it all with y'all tonight, but if we do that in the absence of trying to reseed in with native grasses, you're gonna have maybe an even rougher look out there for a time being. So, I think whatever we do, we should do it deliberately. I think we should have dialogue with the people, not just on the rough and ready, but maybe in other areas around the city that periodically have concerns, and so, but again, I'll reiterate, I think what we're doing, and what we told you last August, was that we are at a base level on maintenance, things like mowing, things like turf care, and that we are trying to take the savings. Remember, we reduced the budget in parks by about a quarter of a million dollars. We are trying to redirect those dollars into capital improvements, things like playgrounds, things like irrigation systems on parks and light systems, and so, there are choices. And you guys gave us a lot of additional funds in the form of those park fees. So, so we are, we are, we are trying to do in the park system like we have done in utilities and on roads and other areas, in that you, you look at your day-to-day operations, you do reduce those down, and we are, we may be at that pressure point where we have reduced further than what the community wants, and that they are in fact willing to pay more for a higher standard. And that's, that's fine. I mean, that's, what I wouldn't want us to do is necessarily do something that takes away from the natural corridor, because they are to serve for that purpose as well. There's water quality concerns if you mow too close to the ditch, and there are wildlife concerns. But I'm not, I'm just saying those are things to juggle.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Dale, there was mention that it's a historical waterway.
I would say that, actually, the rough and ready is one of the more junior ditches. The oligarchy and Longmont supply are much older.
There's some historical concerns about it being, why it's not mowed or some comment of that nature?
I don't know of anything along those lines.
I mean, we can sit here and try to hash this out tonight, and that's something I don't want to do, because I think whether we try to, you know, I've been through the rough and ready ditch several times in the past, I've seen other areas, my mother-in-law is on the, on the west side of town, and I've seen the trail system that goes out there, it's very natural-looking, native grasses and what have you. If we try to replant everything and out there, I'm not sure that the neighbors in this area are gonna be satisfied with how that looks. You know, maybe we take a, ask them to go on a field trip and see if that's what they look, but then again, then we could have other neighbors on the other sides of town saying, we want ours to be completely redone as well. So, trying to piece one could just initiate another in some other area of town. Are we going to change the policy of an overall mowing policy for the city of Longmont to just try to piece one? I don't know if that's, is that what we're gonna do? Each and every time? That's gonna, that's the question the seven of us are gonna have to try to figure out, but I've been by it. It's, sometimes it doesn't look nice and sometimes it looks fine, you know, are they mowing out there themselves? Do we know, do we know if they're doing?
There were spots when we went out there that, areas that there are. I don't think they're doing it from one end to the end. My guess is it's sort of a neighbor-by-neighbor kind of thing. Somebody maybe doesn't have a fence, it's like I'm out mowing, so I'm gonna make it look the way I want it to look in my backyard, so.
I mean.
And we're not, we're not, we're not, we're not out there as the, sort of the police teams.
No, of course not, you know. So, I mean, so we're having folks going out there and doing stuff on their own. Probably not helpful. Whether you like whatever wildlife is out there, and we have wildlife, you know, there's wildlife going through our neighborhoods as well, whether it's foxes or mice or raccoons or what have you. Snakes. I've seen snakes in my neighborhood as well. Again, whatever we propose, is it gonna be satisfactory to all 99, 95. whatever percent? 99.5? I don't, I'm not that optimistic.
So, one of the things that we talked about when we drove around is it also may be helpful to schedule time with council and schedule a tour to go through and look at all the different locations and to see how that standard is applied and what it looks like in different areas. What's interesting is during the walk on Friday, we had one lady that stopped us about another issue and said, I really like this. And unfortunately, I think that's probably what we're gonna see in this discussion. So, I would suggest that we have staff work with you all to schedule a time and where we can get a bus and take you through and see the different areas and see what that standard looks like.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So, I guess the research has been made that the weeds are three feet high out there? Is that actually true?
I don't believe so.
And if they were?
Might be one or two, yes, but whole-scale, no.
And if there were, I think our mowing standards allow us to mitigate that? Is that correct?
We are actively working the weed issue. Weeds are not part of a natural.
Understand. So, if there were excessive noxious weeds, we would be mowing it to control those weeds?
We'd either be mowing or we'd be removing in other ways, or we'd be chemically.
And I think when we went out there, there were some that looked like they were chemically treated. Because they were.
You can spot treat them as well.
You could spot the areas that were treated.
So, it's really not like we're ignoring what we're supposed to be doing, is it?
I don't believe we're ignoring it. I don't, what I believe is we're not maintaining it to the standard and look that they desire. I don't believe it's necessarily a complete failure to maintain, I think it's maintenance level.
Councilmember Moore, to specifically address that question. Last year, and I believe it was September 9th, Dale and I, based on the same conversation, went out and looked at it, and there were some questions and concerns that we had about the appearance at that point. Obviously, the flood hit, here we go. One of the things that we've been watching as we look at that area is, are we meeting the standard? And so, I can say that the times that I've been out there, the area from the fence line to the sidewalk has been mowed, and there's been one strip mowed on the other side of it between that and the ditch. And so, have our folks been meeting the standard? Yes, at least when I've been out there, they've been meeting the standard. We have identified some weeds, we noticed that they have used herbicides to deal with that when we've been out and looked at it. So, that's what we've seen when we've been, when we've been out there. I think the issue is really this, it is the standard. That's the question in this case, is. really this, it is the standard. That's the question in this case, is the standard is not what I gained from the conversations, what these neighbors want in that area. And so I think that's really the question, is the mowing standard.
Okay, well, thanks Dale. I just have some serious concerns about piece meeting out or policies like this. So I would, I'm probably not inclined to support this motion. So just I...
Councilmember Christensen? I agree with Councilman Bagley. I'd like to wait to vote on this because I think we need a little more information. I think it would be great, I would love to take the ditch tour. That would be really fun. Because I appreciate what they're doing. It's trying to think ten years, twenty years, fifty years in the future, what can we do? This is a high plains desert, and we have to create consistent, as consistent as we can, policy for the whole city. And this is the most sensible thing going forward. But as a gardener, those of us who are gardeners know that it takes time sometimes. And if you, there's a difference between just letting it go and actually naturalizing. And I would suggest we be as assertive or aggressive as we can with reseeding the natural grasses and wildflowers, things like that, because you're not gonna get people to change their aesthetic. They want what they want from their childhood, and they, if they want a green lawn, that's what they want. But if we could have meetings like we did with the floods and meet with them and explain the long-term need for this financially and in terms of environmentalism, that might go a long way to getting them to understand and accept a different standard than what they would prefer.
Councilmember Edmond?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I will withdraw the motion. However, this is, this is a problem, and we haven't dealt with it now for two years in a row. It is, it's ugly. And if I were one of those neighbors, I'd be upset too. And I'd be upset with us for not doing anything for two years. I would love to take the ditch tour, and I'd love to take Charlie on the ditch tour. I don't think it will make any difference, but we can certainly do that. They've all gotten the little folder. They all know what naturalizing is supposed to look like, but that's not what theirs looks like. So the brochure, they could use to start their fireplace, because it doesn't apply to them. I would withdraw that motion. And with that, as long as I have the floor announce my business of the week.
Well, first, your second's gotta...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, of course, Councilmember.
Okay, the motion's been withdrawn.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagley. I appreciate that. Business of the week was given to me by Sean Lewis, Dizzy Family Fun Center at 455 Weaver Park Road, Suite 100 in Longmont. A family fun center, they have laser tag, a laser maze, arcades, a kiddie town for little kiddies. And they even have on no, no school days, they have activities for your children who are not in school.
What's the name of that place?
It's called Dizzy Family Fun Center.
The future office of the Bagley law?
455 Weaver Park Road.
What's that address, one more time?
455 Weaver Park Road, Suite 100 in Longmont. Sounds like a lot of fun. Grandkids will be going there over Christmas, I guarantee you.
Should be 500?
100.
100.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I want to get that address right so I have those kids that are out of school. And speaking of children, this Friday's Halloween, drivers, please, please be cautious when you're driving on Friday night with those children of all ages, because there are children of all ages that trick or treat. So please be cautious and be wary of those ghosts and goblins that are out trick or treating. Just be cautious. There was something else I had, and I just, my mind just went blank. So Happy Halloween to everybody, and if I think of it, I'll get back in the queue. Thank you.
Councilmember Warren?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just want to make a comment on just how great Longmont really is and what the resources we have as a community. And as an example, that the Colorado Association of Libraries just awarded the Longmont Public Library, Library Project of the Year for their project called The Expansion of Services for Children and Teens on the Autism Spectrum. It's a great program. They've got, they've set it up so that these autistic students can be in the library after hours so that they're not, you know, having to deal with all the input from all the other activity in the library. And it was all because of a grant that the library received. And I think it's just awesome that the public library can be a gathering place and an educational facility that it is, and it's just another example of how great Longmont really is.
Thank you, Jeff. Councilmember Christensen?
This week is, aside from Halloween, it's also time for everybody to vote. I'd like to remind everybody to vote. If you haven't voted, vote, because otherwise you'll get endless calls until you too vote. And remember that over the last several hundred years, several thousands and thousands of people have given their lives. So we had the privilege and duty to vote. So don't spit on their graves. Vote.
Speaking of voting, do we have council meeting on election night on the fourth?
Are we doing the city manager comments? Or, well, yes. So the answer to the question is, we do not have any agenda items for Tuesday night. So we do not have the need for a study session on Tuesday.
Okay.
That's what I was gonna announce to Councilmembers.
Good.
I can, I have the ability to cancel that study session.
Okay, good.
Councilmember Levison?
Yes, I also want to thank the library staff for not only having that grant, but making that grant money work so efficiently in our community. I know several children who are on the autistic spectrum, and having targeted services, not only does it help the child so much and support their positive development, but it really does help the parents, because it's a very difficult thing to find appropriate activities for your children, especially when they have different needs than other children. And I think it just shows that we've got a library in a community that both has compassion and also a true dedication to serving diverse populations. And I think it's a fantastic acknowledgement of the great library services in many areas. I also want to encourage people to go out to the Day of the Dead at the museum. And, gosh, there was something else. Oh, I have cans of food in my car. I would suggest that wherever you go, in fact, when I'm standing in line at the grocery store, I will hum myself and start begging people to buy a can of food so that we can at least make a decent showing.
When is our deadline?
November 4th is our deadline. And isn't it November 4th? November 1st? Okay, all right. Well, let's all go to the grocery store. And any city staff that would like to support, and anyone out there in TV land that would like to help the city council make a decent showing to collect canned food for the food bank at the hour center, so it can stay in our community and help people, please help us raise some cans.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I usually don't say much during council comments. I say enough during the meeting. But I've got a problem that I need your help with. I grew up in a very traditional conservative home where the men had the power. And the problem is that, no, hold on, hold on. And so I've learned that being married to a Mexican woman, that I no longer have the power.
Well, you finally come to that conclusion.
I've come to that, I, long ago. But what I cannot live with, what I cannot live with is having my daughter have the power. And so, and so my daughter, in alignment with Councilmember Levison, we can't lose this. So my plea to all who are watching and my fellow council members is that we come up with a plan and make a commitment to spend X amount of dollars, bring in Y amount of cans. Yeah, so my question is, when's the deadline? Okay, so my question is, what commitment do I have? Because, I mean, we gotta, I can't lose.
I have eighteen items in my car right there.
Eighteen's not gonna do it. So what did they have last year?
A lot.
Can we each get a hundred cans? I don't, listen, Councilmember Santos, can we each get a, can we get a hundred cans?
Okay.
Can we commit to a hundred cans?
All right.
I move that we all give a hundred cans. Well, I have a second.
Yeah.
Bring a hundred cans.
Okay. Well, on another, a little more serious note, I've been asked to sign a letter of support for the Salute Clinic, and they've helped about fourteen thousand people in our community. And it's a great community health. And, you know, I'm not gonna bring it forward tonight, but I would like to bring it forward and have the entire council vote on it at some point, so it won't happen next time. So I'll put that on the agenda and see if we're all in support of it. It's a, if anybody has, would like to go out there and see the clinic, I mean, they just expanded in a new space, and it's just, it's just really awesome what they do and how many people they help in our community. So anyway, I just thought I'd let you know that I was very interested in having the entire council support that. But since nobody's really had a chance to see that letter yet, I didn't want to surprise anybody tonight. Anyway, I guess that's it. I did enjoy the community bike ride, and I just wouldn't like to dispel a rumor that I did not push over David, I mean, Brian, Brian Schumacher, I guess he fell and cracked his head open. But anyway, I hope he's doing well. It's like, I don't have a good track record with city employees riding their bikes.
Well, it's not your Sean.
Yeah. All right, city attorney, I mean, not city attorney, but city manager, any additional remarks?
So I do have the ability to cancel the study session, and we are gonna cancel the study session. I didn't get to get to that piece on that. Sandy was giving me a hard time. I also would like to remind council that if you remember when we went over the schedule for the November meetings, because of other meetings that occurred, we moved the meeting on the 10th and the 17th to Monday. And then we have also the meeting on the 25th scheduled. So we're gonna meet the requirement established by the charter for the number of meetings. I just wanted to remind everyone.
Okay.
It is, I just checked, and it should be. If it's not on your calendar, let us know, because that is probably a different issue.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Harold, is the 10th a study session as well?
The 10th is a regular session. The 17th is a study session, and the 25th is a regular session.
Okay.
Councilmember Christensen?
The airport director, Tim Barth, would like a little more time. Could we schedule him to talk for a little bit more time? Oh, I'm sorry. Could we, at one of our study sessions, have Tim Barth talk for a little bit more time, because he sort of got short-changed on this discussion?
We will post the agenda items as needed as we continue to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
City attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
No comments, Mayor.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.